Okay, we're back in session. Next item on the agenda, item B, Comprehensive Annual Financial Report. Appendix E, Mary Hazel Small.
Tonight, I'm pleased to present a copy of the, present to the board the Comprehensive Annual Financial Report that you have at your place. For the public, there's also a copy on our website, you know, under the finance website for the school system. The format's very similar to prior years. There are four sections. The introductory section includes a letter of transmittal to the board and citizens, and it provides just a brief overview of the school system. The financial section includes the financial audit report, management's discussion analysis, which is a little bit more detailed financial analysis than the first letter, and the actual financial statements are in that section. The statistical section has several charts with ten years of comparative data that you can, ten years of trend information. And then the compliance section includes all of the other audit reports, you know, from the audit. The basic financial statements themselves have two different views of the financial condition of the school system. The first two statements are at the government-wide level, and then they sort of provide a short-term and long-term information about the board's overall financial status. The remaining statements are much more detailed about the board's operations, and these statements tell how the basic services were financed, as well as what remains to be, what remains available for future spending. And generally, the main question board members have is, you know, how much is in fund balance? So the, the total, before I mention that, the total governmental fund expenditures last year totaled over $227 million, of which 75% was instructional, 21% support, and the remaining 4% in capital outlay and others. The final per pupil operating costs were $8,834, which was a 3% increase over the prior year. The unassigned general fund balance decreased by 11%. The balance is now approximately $16 million and represents 7% of our governmental expenditure excluding capital outlay. The board has a goal of 8%. We dropped slightly below that with the property purchase for the, I forgot the name of it. I always call it the Rock Church property.
Rock Church.
There you go. But there's another name, but that's the name I call it. The, at this time, though, I just want to take a moment to thank all of finance staff members who, especially our director, Ron Turner, who's here, and Nancy Braswell, our internal auditor, for their work in helping coordinate the audit, as well as their service throughout the year. And I want to publicly thank Michelle Thompson, who's going to speak with you in a moment. She is our audit partner with Jerry Becker, and the rest of her audit team for the great professional job they did in working with us from, I guess, early May through October. This is quite a experience that we go through every year. At this time, Michelle's going to present the audit results, and then if you have any questions about either the financial statements or the audit, we'll both be glad to answer them.
I'm not going to make you go through all of these slides. These are for you to read before you go to bed. They will assist in going to sleep. So really, what everybody wants to know from the auditor is, what's the opinion? You know, what were the results of the audit? And so what the results of the audit were, you can find them on the slides, see, eight, nine, and 10. That's where the individual results are. There's three set of auditing standards that we follow when we perform an audit. There's the government auditing standards on the financial numbers themselves. There is the yellow book standards, which are an additional set of standards that we look at. And then there are the O M B circular, A 133, and state single audit standards, which have to do with compliance with federal and state programs. I'm pleased to report that, once again, the board received an unmodified opinion. They have every year, and they continue to, which basically means we believe that the financial statements are fairly presented in all material respects. I want to echo Mary Hazel's comments in thanking the finance department. Like we said, we park in there with them for quite a bit of the year, and they're always very responsive, and we work under a lot of deadlines, and they are always very helpful. Other than that, there's things in this slide that will tell, this slide presentation will tell you about our audit approach, that'll explain the approach that we follow when we do a risk assessment. They're all very interesting. And then there is also a slide that talks about the auditor's standards and are required to communicate with you. You should have received a letter that is the auditor's required communication. The items that we generally talk about in there are things related to that we're independent, tells you if there are any new accounting or auditing standards that affected these financial statements. There were none this year, so they are very simple. There's no changes from the way they were presented in the prior year. If there are any other questions, otherwise, that concludes my presentation.
Board members have questions? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
I would like to commend Mary Hazel for the outstanding job that her staff does year in, year out.
First, I don't tell her that. She hears that every year.
I know that, but I just, you know, they always say it's, you ought to recognize people when they're doing a great job, and, you know, she keeps us out of trouble. We hear so often, I mean, we heard at the School Board 101, the story of some financial shenanigans that have gone on in other, not in North Carolina, but in New York and some places like that. And I feel very certain that none of that's going to happen as long as Mary Hazel is doing the books.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Because they always call me and want to know if I know anything about any kind of a fraud survey or anything like that, and I just, I just can't imagine what you'd be talking about, you know, with everything I've seen, safeguards and so forth. So we appreciate the job that y'all do. Item C is the, and this is on for information, so there's no action. It's a, the North Carolina School Board Association sent out a resolution about the letter grades resolution, you know, in the grading of schools. And I think they're wanting to see what other school boards around the state, I don't know who, does anybody remember, because I do not have that in front of me in my, it came from Cabarrus.
Okay. And what I would ask for the, from the board tonight, this is information, you've seen it, do you want us to modify it for us? Do you want it as an action item next month? Just need some direction, really, from the board in terms of where they want to go with this resolution.
I think I had said before, I didn't like the Cabarrus letter because I don't think it addresses really some of the issues, the issue of 80% being, I think I'm right on this, 80% being growth.
It's 80%, it's 80% proficiency, 20% growth, okay.
And the suggestion is that if they're going to do this, which they are, then it really ought to be more 50/50. And so I would like, I would suggest that if we draft a letter and we're going to do this, we put some wording in there, making a suggestion that it be 50% on proficiency, 50% on growth.
How would it be, Mr. Chairman, if Dr. Markley and his staff puts in their recommendations, and then we put this on the agenda for our retreat, so that we can discuss it and get it, because we need to have it available as soon as possible.
So that's a good suggestion to me. Is anybody opposed to it?
Is that a problem for you?
I'm not necessarily opposed to it. I just, I don't know, this issue is not, it just doesn't, it just doesn't get me worked up. Do you know what I mean? It's, I mean, I understand, I think what's going to happen with this, to be quite honest with you, is most people aren't going to pay any attention to the letter grades. I mean, I think what the, what the purpose of this, of the legislation, flawed as it may be, was to inject some sort of accountability, and I, and I understand that. But, you know, I just, I'm just not inspired to pass a resolution, you know, just, just to clarify the 80/20, you know, rule.
Well, I mean, I would say to you that a lot of people, you said you didn't think anybody'd get upset.
I don't think so.
You know, a lot of people get upset if they find their school, or school is not doing well. I mean, that's the first time, then they, doesn't make a difference how well their child's doing. If the school's not doing well, they immediately want their child out of that school. And, you know, I'm thinking that, the way, the way they're going to do this thing is going to be so skewed that the suggestion at, at the thing we went to back in December is that very few schools are going to do well. I mean, you know, doing well is probably going to be a C, which is average.
Well, you know, under, under No Child Left Behind, it was a similar situation, where you, you know, if your child's school didn't perform, you know, based on the, you know...
Missing one, missing one group.
Right.
And we, we complained and complained, and every time I saw McIntyre, I'd ask him about when the education reauthorization came up, they needed to clean that up and everything. But I mean, you could have a school, you know, take a school like New Hanover, may actually have 24 identifiable groups, 23 of them passed or made expectation, but that 24th one didn't, and all of a sudden, it's labeled as a failing school, which was, and I'm afraid that's kind of what might happen.
Right, but what I'm saying is, wasn't there a provision in the No Child Left Behind legislation that, that if your child's school did not perform, and I can't remember the phrase all day.
CLDA clause.
Right, that, that you could essentially ask for a transfer. You could, after two years of poor performance, demand it.
If you asked what you had to give them.
So how many, how many people actually did that, though?
Quite a few.
Quite a few, and we had to provide transportation.
Yeah, and I mean, like, they all wanted to go to Myrtle Grove as a middle school from Williston and some of the others. And, you know, it, it really did create some crowding and...
My concerns with the grading system as it's currently constituted is that, and I've said this before, it really does not give the school an honest grade. I could take the grades, match them up against the socioeconomic of the school, and tell you what that school's going to get for a grade. So if you wanted a socioeconomic predictor, that's what you're going to get. My concern with this legislatively is that this becomes a tool, then, for other legislation that impacts what we're doing in schools. Florida has a grading system, and they've had one for a, for a long time, which, and we graded schools in some form or another. If we're going to give schools grades, then I wish we had done it using the Florida model, which is a much more balanced model than what this one is. I got no problems giving schools grades, and we'll meet and we'll match those grades. I just think the current model, as it's constituted, is not a very good indicator of school quality. It's more an indicator of school socioeconomic. And then the high school model is, we're still trying to figure out what the high school model is to get to, get a grade. It has, it includes things like ACT, which is a national test, and not even a state test in those formulas. So I've got some concerns about the way this grading scale is being implemented, and I've got some concerns, I think, of the long-term implications of this for education.
Well, I think then we need to be, if we're going to entertain a, a resolution, then we need to be very specific about, and not so much, you know, this is what we don't like about it, but this is what we'd like you to change about it.
Well, what I was going to suggest was, why not, since you're familiar with the Florida model, can you make this resolution kind of resemble that? So that might be something we would be in favor of, of sharing and possibly making, getting into, make some changes.
I would like to hear what the Florida model is first, before we...
That's what I'm saying, if you could let us know, because it's already been suggested we take this up at the retreat.
Which is Saturday. I got a legislative luncheon to get ready for on Thursday. Can you give me a little more time?
You can whip this out tonight when you get home, right?
Can we have a work session this month?
We can. If you do it, if you...
No, we don't.
If you give me till February, I, give me a couple of weeks just to, and I can get you something for the, for the February meeting.
I don't think this is, is this a...
No, this is just information, and I don't think it's anything that's that pressing. It was just, it's just like the other one that we're going to take up in a couple of minutes. It was sent to us to share with the board and for the board to decide if there's anything there, they won't, you know, we might just ignore the whole thing. We don't have to do anything. Mr. Chairman?
My, my comment is, if you look at this resolution, essentially, they're asking for a delay in the issuance of the school performance grades until a new system. And then they further ask, at least that their board, Cabarrus Board, that their superintendent work with other superintendents in the state board to come up with a system that's fairer. So it would seem to me that if every school board system creates a resolution, it's going to be hard for the deciders to agree with something, whereas if, if Dr. Markley meets with other superintendents or have the opportunity to get with other, well, other systems, I don't know if, if there's an opportunity with conferences or not, but then you're in a position at least to come back with a stronger voice.
And this is, we belong to what's called a large district consortium, which are largest districts in the state, and this is an issue that that group has, one of the, one of the issues that we, that we've addressed or tried to address. And you all tell, the General Assembly delayed the grades becoming public. They were supposed to become public in the fall, but with an election coming, it decided to postpone it till after the election.
So do, I guess that's the question that I'm hearing, is do we ask for a delay so that school systems can weigh in, or do you come up with your own and just see what filters Personally, I'd like to see if this larger district is, is an opportunity to have a stronger voice. It seemed like to me legislators would listen to that a lot better than 115 different resolutions.
Y'all discussed it, that large schools consortium, because I received a call sometime back from the Star News, and they mentioned that, that they knew that it was being discussed there.
Okay.
So...
I'll see what I can do.
Okay. All right, item nine, superintendent's report.
Just that I would remind the group that legislative breakfast luncheon is on Thursday, and that the retreat is on Saturday. Patriots play at 4:30, so please, let's be done by 4:00.
What's more important, I have an oyster roast at 4:30, so that takes precedent.
So it's from 10 to 4?
Yes.
10 to 4 are the hours that we, that I regularly had put in my book, is 10 to 4.
And it is at Union Station downtown.
We'll watch traffic on the river, Mr. Higgins, instead of airplanes taking off.
Can you take care of the chains there, the parking?
I have my doubts.
Let's see what we can do about that.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, item 10, consensus items, item A, budget amendment, amendments. Appendix G, Mary Hazel Small.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I request the board approve the amendments to the State Public School Fund, the General Fund, and the Capital Outlay Fund, and if you have any questions, I'll be glad to answer them.
Yes, ma'am. If, if in your present, could you discuss in general what's prompted the budget amendment and what you're trying to accomplish by it? I think that would help me, and the other six may be fine, but if that, if you, that would help me, and I think the public might appreciate that explanation as well.
Certainly for the State Public School Fund, we are recording revisions, like every couple of weeks, they revise different program budgets, and so the most significant revisions are the mid-year transportation adjustment. Every year, as of December, they adjust our transportation funding. So that was almost, well, 559,000 additional money that they hold back and release in December. We also include, received an additional allotment from the School Technology Fund, which is funded by fines and forfeitures at the state level, and we had a reversion of the summer reading camp program. We could only spend the money that was allotted for the summer reading camp on the program, so it was, any money left over at the end reverted last month. For the general fund, just a couple of small adjustments, we received a Duke Energy rebate for about $3,500, and we also transferred some money from contracted risk management. It was some one-time money the board had appropriated, and we had finished that project, and we transferred it over to partially fund the transportation facility, that's the name of, at Siberry Road. And then finally, for capital outlay, which is the most significant changes, recording the budget for, approved by the county for the northeast elementary land purchase to reduce the lottery budget for completed projects. What happens with lottery funding is, as each project is approved, you set up a budget for that. As projects are completed and we save money, the money goes back to our account at the state, and then you reapply. So we haven't lost this money, we just have to reapply for future projects, one of which is on the list, which is the construction phase of the Williston Middle School, $150,000. And finally, we moved some money from capital outlay contingency, about $108,000 for this Siberry Road facility. Is that good? Any other questions?
Any other questions?
We didn't move, we didn't approve. He asked his question before we, did we go back to do that?
We didn't have a motion, motion to approve.
Motion to approve?
Second.
Any other questions? All who are in the favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? It's approved, thank you. Item B, personnel, appendix P, Dr. Wellmers.
Thank you, Ms. Chairman. Request the board approve Personnel Matters as presented.
Move for approval?
Second.
Questions? All who are in the favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? It's approved, thank you. Item 11, under old business, item A, policies on for second reading, Mrs. Nichols.
These are for second reading for approval tonight, and since I didn't hear from anyone, and they are, some of them are updates, and one is for deletion, shall I submit them as a group?
I have no objections. Does anybody have an objection to approving all at one time?
Nope.
A second.
Okay, we have a motion, second. Questions? All who are in the favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? They're approved, thank you. Under item 12, under new business, item A, Local Control of School Calendar Resolution, appendix a, Donald Hayes. This was one of those resolutions that was presented to us, because I think we all know the history of how this came about for systems prior to the legislature enacting a start date and an end date for the whole state. It was a constant squabble over the years with, with systems. You know, we'd start at a certain date, or another system would start, and athletics would come into play and so forth, so I guess that's why the legislature got involved and did this, and I think...
Well, that and the other issue of tourism.
Right, I was trying to say, and the tourism angle, which I think was more coastal counties and mountainous counties, I think we're having more of a problem with that, and I think school systems are trying to be sympathetic with, with that concern, because, you know, the more successful your businesses are, they're paying property taxes and so forth, which support the schools. So anyway, there's a move to do away with that, and that's what this, of course, here again, this is something we do not have to, you know, do anything with, really. It's just that these resolutions come to us from the North Carolina School Boards Association, and we share with the board, and if it's something we want to be involved with, and we have in the past been involved with different resolutions. The only thing I would say on this is that I just, in a sense, resent, I like the local control aspect of us deciding what we want to do, and I know the community college calendar comes into play here with, and many factors. What we have to do, who's on the calendar committee, Mrs., oh, Mr. Higgins, is a challenge, and now we're looking at, what, 185 days versus 180?
Yeah, and this directly impacts, one of our, our goals, we talk about is professional development. This calendar is so constraining that trying to build in professional development that doesn't impact student time in the classroom is nearly impossible.
So this is on really just for your wishes to discuss, that we can either do nothing, because it's just a suggestion to the legislature, anyway. I mean, they're going to make the decision, but it's just letting them know our opinions.
Can I, can I ask you a question?
Sure.
When, when did that legislation go into effect that, that essentially, the control, yeah, to control, yes, when was that?
God, I think I was a principal.
At least.
10 years.
Has it been 10 years?
Yeah.
I couldn't remember. And I think it's been a long...
Oh, yeah.
Okay, I couldn't remember.
There was, there used to be a representative from out on the Outer Banks who recently retired, Mark Bassner, yeah, who was, who, anytime anybody tried to change this, stalled it, dumped it out of committee. And then when he retired, there was another one who sort of kept pushing it so it wouldn't come forward, but with changes in the legislature, maybe our best opportunity is to actually make some changes in this legislation.
I just, I didn't know the history, so I appreciate you.
And it was just a constant, I know every year, we would, what, football was a factor that, you know, some systems would start and others hadn't started, and they were trying to set up athletic schedules, and like I said, the Cape Town Community College, their schedule, we were trying to fit ours in so our kids could take advantage of things down there.
We used to start, what, the second week in August?
Yeah, and I will tell you some...
And got done, we finished at Christmas break. And, you know, the, from the tourist industry's point of view, what they were saying was, there were two things they were saying. Number one, they were saying that they needed the high school students to still be available to work at least in, as late in August as they could, because they said they were still getting northern students who somehow, some way, they don't start to after labor day, but maybe they go deeper into the summer than we do.
They do. Most of their school years run into, to June.
Okay, well, so, you know, that was, that was the tourist thing, that they wanted high schoolers to be able to continue to work until late in August, and in fact, they said they didn't need them as much in June as they needed them in late August. And it just, at the time, it seemed logical, but then when you had to start dealing with it, I mean, and, and when they started playing with the number of days, when they went to the 185 days...
Made a big difference.
And the next thing you know, we're going to be cutting out Christmas vacation, I mean, because we just won't have enough days to...
Now, there's a, there's a, there's a, it's 185 days or a certain number of hours?
Correct.
And that is the, the 11, 9, 72, or what, what's the, what's the...
It's 1,025.
1,025. Because we, we did have some flexibility when we had, last year, we, you know, knock on wood, we had a, we had a little storm.
If you add up the instructional days and hours, we exceed the 1025, so that does give us a little flexibility. With students, now, you also have personnel days in there that when a, an employee misses a day, they're, it becomes a little more, a little more confusing for Mary Hazel.
Right.
Her and I go round and round on, on those things.
You know, at one time, one time we had...
I did want to say that that was a more recent change, in the last couple of years, the hours. Before that, it was a set number of days.
It was a set number of days, okay.
At one time, we lobbied, at least I lobbied, Carolyn Justice, to see if they couldn't just, just make it the hours. I mean, that was going through the time when the fuel prices were high and everything, and I think it was Colorado was the primary one who went, actually, to a four-day school week, but they went, they went to, like, from 8:00 in the morning to 5:00, 5:30 at night, but they only went Monday through Thursday. They didn't, that way, the buses didn't have to run on Friday, they didn't have to open the buildings on Friday and all that. But nevertheless, I mean, you know, they, they prefer the 185 days. I think in order to get those, that extra 15 minutes, we had to have a reason. We couldn't just decide that we wanted to have 15 minutes to make up some time. We, we had to have a reason, I believe.
So why, why wasn't the athletic schedule tweaked? I mean, to, who oversees that, that schedule?
I think the confusion there came in where different systems started at different times, and I don't know what, Dr. Holliday, what the rule says about when football practice can start by the North Carolina High School Athletic Association.
High School Athletic Association, football practice and all fall sports start August 1, regardless of when school starts. I said regardless.
He didn't say irregardless.
I said it right.
That's awesome.
But it starts August 1.
Major brownie points.
Whenever you start school, so it's not just football. Football is, is every fall sport, and also marching band and other activities also start around that time. So you have, at the high school level, it really doesn't impact the other schools as much as it does the high school. High school level, a good number of your students are starting some kind of school activity by August 1.
Is that nationwide, or is that just a, is that a state by state?
It's state by state.
I do know it gets hot here.
Mm-hmm.
So where are we?
Well, if we're going to do one, I support the wording in draft B, because I don't think it's quite as, as...
This is one that I think it was on, this is on our list of legislative priorities, so this would be in line with, with those legislative priorities.
Do you want to hang on to this and maybe just, you know, have an opportunity to look it over a little further and make suggestions and bring it back?
That's fine with me, because I can't bring it up, and I can't read that.
You can't read that?
My, I need, I've got to get, go ahead and do your glasses.
You've got, there were two drafts on... You've got, there were two drafts online, A and B, I would ask you to look at those two. Please let me know which one you prefer, and it seems like draft B is a general consensus.
I, I think because it doesn't use words like, draft A uses the words usurping.
Yeah, we don't need that.
I, that's, that's pretty much in the, you know, in-your-face type language, and I just like the draft B, they use the word removing.
All right, so now.
Well, because the legislate, the, the General Assembly that we're proposing this to wasn't the General Assembly that enacted the legislation, so I would hate to, you know, sort of push that on them and say, well, you're, you know, you're doing this.
Bring that back in draft B?
I did have one more question, if you don't mind. There's a, the wording in the second page, whereas by mandating that every school calendar go into June, the current calendar law has forced retiring teachers who want to finish school, the school year, to wait till July to retire, placing large burdens on the retirement system every July. That, will you clarify that to me? Because that doesn't, I mean, what does it matter which month that the date is set?
When you get your first check?
I'm sorry?
When you get your first check?
When you get your first, no, well, I'm saying, it, it says that it places a large burden on the retirement system every July. Well, if they set it, the school calendar to end in June, it will place a large burden on the retirement system in every June, so it, it's not an issue.
If it's an either or, like, some may end in May, some may end in June, so it might stagger that retirement zone, I would, that would be the only thing I can see.
It's, I would suggest that that's a one you could, you could take out, it's more superfluous than.
It didn't make much sense.
Sometimes you try to find lots of reasons when three or four are just, just as good.
We don't have, do we have a provision?
Yeah, that's a weak argument, so let's, let's.
Do we have a provision that mandates that they cannot retire to July?
No.
That's, so, I mean.
We have folks retire in March.
I mean, I, I know Cape Fear now has a provision that says they cannot retire until the first of the month, you have to retire on the first of the month.
Right.
But you can't, now you can't retire until the first of the month following the end of a semester, because my, I left with a week and a half left to go in the, in the school year, because it benefited, benefited me to leave at that time, and, but then after that, they, they have passed a policy now, they will not let people retire until the.
Best of mine, all is, we don't get to, we don't get to dictate any retirement, that's the state.
I just didn't know. Well, I mean, yeah, the state, the first is mandated by the state.
Yeah.
So, are we going with draft B, or are we gonna wait and?
Well, it looks like draft B, I can make a couple of the.
Maybe with some revisions.
With a couple of minor revisions and put this on as an action item in February.
Sounds good.
Everybody comfortable with that?
Yes.
All right.
So, we're not gonna approach the legislative, it's not gonna be an issue to the.
Well, it'll be on our list of legislative priorities Thursday, so, but then we'll follow it up with this a couple, a couple of weeks later.
Okay.
Would you mind some suggestions via email, or?
Email would be fine.
Okay, good.
Okay, item B is our 2015-16 Curriculum Course Guide, Appendix J, Dr. Smith.
Yes, each year, we bring to the Board for the Board's Approval, updates to our Curriculum Course Guide prior to us entering the enrollment season. Major changes here represents just updates to the curriculum course numbers. Also, there were some pictures added this year that did not increase the number of pages, but we did think that represented well our high schools, for which we developed this Curriculum Course Guide, and then also, there were changes to the guidelines for establishing rank. I'm sure you're very familiar with the fact that our entering freshman students will now be on a ten-point grading scale, whereas students who have entered prior to that time are on a seven-point grading scale. We would, however, ask that you, we would ask that you approve this document, but also, the State Board of Education is meeting later this week to discuss this very item, and if they approve the ten-point grading scale for all students, we would ask that you allow our department the flexibility to make that update and change, but we didn't want to wait another month for the State Board to have that action and then bring it to you for the first time.
Move for approval with the, with the finding that the, Dr. Smith can make an adjustment if the State Board of Education approves the ten-point scale for everybody.
Okay.
Second.
Questions? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? It's approved.
Thank you.
Thank you. Item C, Local Options for Alternative Schools, Appendix K, Dr. Smith.
Yes, local boards of education are required to select or determine the option for the accountability model for their alternative schools. We've had some recent changes in the options that are available to our alternative schools in the district. There are four options. Our department is recommending Option C, which is the Alternative Progress School Model, which would, in adopting this accountability model, include the component of student persistence at twenty percent, the component of student achievement counting for twenty percent, and the component of student growth, or overall school growth, counting at sixty percent. And we would ask that the school board would support this recommendation and approve the alternative school accountability model for Lake, Lake Forest Academy, Mosley, and then also Lakeside.
Move for approval.
Second.
Any questions? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? It's approved. Item D, Snipes Year-Round Calendar, Appendix L, Dr. Smith.
Yes, last month, we heard a wonderful presentation from the principal of Snipes Academy of Arts and Design. In that presentation, she shared with you some very compelling data to support the school's desire to transition to a year-round calendar for the sixteen-seventeen school year, and we would ask for the board's support and approval for that transition to that calendar. Next year would be a planning year for them, and then following that year, they would transition to a year-round school calendar.
Move for approval.
Second.
Comments, questions?
I will say that we're gonna miss a very famous part of our audience, because they've been faithful for so long, so we want you to come back, though.
You're always welcome, you know that. Any other comments or questions? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you, and thank you for being here and the work you've done over there to get, get ready to move forward in this direction. I think it's gonna, it's a strong opponent of year-round, so commend you for that. Item E, y'all don't have to get up and leave.
They gotta start planning.
You're gonna start planning, right?
Sure.
Item E, Solitary Health Contract Amendment Number One, Appendix M, Dr. Holliday.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, and we're asking that you allow us to amend this contract to this, this already existing contract, because we have certain of our own employees that are going out on short-term leaves, and it's cheaper for us to up this contract and try, try to hire the very hard-to-hire positions of speech therapists and occupational therapists, so we ask that you allow us to amend this contract.
Move for approval.
Second.
Comments, questions?
So, Dr. Holliday, what you're saying is that we have, we have employees here that work for the school system who are going out on maternity leave, and so we're gonna, through this contract, replace them while they're on maternity leave?
Yes, ma'am, and the reason for that is hiring speech pathologists and occupational therapists is a very high-demand area, hard to hire those people, so we have to supplement that with the contract, which is what the original contract that you all approved did. Now that we've got employees that are going out, we need to up that contract and get these kids' IEPs covered.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Any other questions, comments? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? It's approved, thank you. Item F, ADECO Contract, Appendix M, Dr. Wellmers.
Thank you, Ms. Chairman. The ADECO Company is the company that we contract with to provide temporary staffing to, in a lot of our physicians throughout the school system, and each department has, typically, uses a temporary staffing, this agency during the school year. And normally, we stay within the, under the fifty thousand dollar cap as to what we look for in this, but this year, we're, we're going to go over, and we can see that, and so what we're asking is for the board to approve an amendment to, to increase this to seventy-four thousand, seven sixty-eight, which is a twenty-five thousand dollar increase, which will put us over the fifty thousand dollar cap, that we always want to explain to the board why we're doing that. This year, what, what the biggest cost change that we've had is the technology department using temporary staff to, well, and Ms. Brinson can explain this much better than I can, but to work with, the computers are putting in the schools and, and those sorts of things.
Ms. Brinson, would you, would you like to make my words sound like I know what I'm talking about?
Yeah, we use the, the temp services and the temp agency to, to hire people that can help us with the imaging, with all the mobile labs we've got going out to the schools these last three years, and then with the project of moving people over to Windows Seven and Active Directory, our staff isn't big enough to do the project and our regular work orders and everything else, so we actually hire some temp, you know, people to work for us during these project times in imaging and help us through this, this project period, and we, you know, have on there basically eight thousand dollars additionally would get us through these projects that we're doing this year.
Move for approval.
Second.
Comments, questions? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Approved. Item G, North Carolina Education Lottery Project Application, Appendix O, Neil Hans.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, thank you. We request that the board approve the lottery application. This is for renovations at Sidbury Road in order to accommodate College Park when they move there in the seventeen-eighteen school year.
Move for approval.
Second.
Comments, questions?
Yeah, I just, just, is this part of that money that Mary Hazel said we sent back to the lottery, or?
Now, these are lottery, this is applications for lottery dollars, but some of it might be, but.
It, it's possible, I mean, I didn't really, I don't know if it's dollar for dollar, but certainly.
I guess the question I, I would ask, lottery money has to be appropriated for a specific project?
Approved by both, the, this board and the Board of County Commissioners.
And so, if, and I forget how much it was, you, you said we were sending back six, seven hundred thousand?
It was about eight hundred, but then we, also, a hundred and fifty of it was budgeted for a project, so.
Okay, well, and, and this is just for information's sake, so we could not have notified the state that we now need extra, we need to keep this money to do the Sidbury Road, it's just, it's always gotta be refunded and then reapplied for?
Right, and we really, they don't send us the money, we don't hold it until, when we write checks, they send us.
I understand that, I'm just thinking about the application process and, and, you know, having us have to approve it and all that kind of stuff.
Generally, we don't budget it until they sort of appropriate it, so you, you approve the project, and then they will appropriate money for the design, and then we'll bring you a budget amendment, and a couple of months later, they'll appropriate money for construction, and we'll bring another, so it gets really confusing.
You'll have two different contracts, so.
But they hold this money for us if it, if it's not.
In an interest bearing account for us, yes.
No other county, I mean.
No, it's not like when we give it, we send it back, we're not gonna get it back.
Well, I knew she said that, but I just say it's like a kind of a.
It's a procedural.
Funny way to run a railroad, that you send it back, and then you gotta reapply to get the money back that you just sent them back, why, you know, why we can't just, you know, transfer it.
That is a great question.
Transfer it to another project.
We're justifying positions.
Government bureaucracy and so forth.
And these are the only funds that we have to actually, in terms of bills, and we have to go to the county commissioner, and then to get approval for the use of those funds.
So, so we have to, not only do we have to apply to the state to get it, the county commissioners have to approve for us to get that money. Yeah.
And the money flows through the county.
Yeah, okay.
When we spend it, we have to request it of the county, the county has to request it of the state, and it flows through with every check we write. It is quite convoluted.
Yes, that's what I was thinking.
So inefficient.
Any other philosophical comments? If I don't disagree? All those, we have a motion, second, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Approved. Item thirteen, under call to the audience for our non-agenda items, did Mr. McIntyre, Daniel McIntyre, did he arrive?
Going once.
Going twice? Okay.
May I ask something before we go into our closed session? I'm going to the yearly advocacy conference that I go to in, in Washington, DC, and it's the first Tuesday in February. I was wondering if the board would consider moving the meeting from the first Tuesday to the second Tuesday?
From the third to the tenth?
Yes, please.
I have no problem with that, I don't know.
Is there board member that's?
That's what I'm looking, I don't think so.
Fine with me. That's fine with me.
Do you see any something?
That's the second. No, that's fine with me. I have no problem.
Well, I don't, I know we, we try to accommodate, you know, board members who are attending functions, and will bring back a wealth of knowledge to share with us, we, we appreciate it, so.
Try and twist the congressman and senator's arms.
Yep. Okay, so, yeah, we can do that, we'll change it. Next item on the agenda, item fourteen, we need a closed session pursuant to North Carolina General Statutes 143, 318, 11A1, and 115C, 319, and 321. Anything that I missed, Mr. Bullard?
Yes, sir.
That sounds good.
I'm going to go with the closed session.
Your second?
Your second.
All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Thank you, we are in closed session.